We'll call the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors meeting for September 21st, 2010, to order at 9:07. Clerk, please conduct the real call.
Supervisor McCowen?
Here.
Supervisor Pinches?
Here.
Supervisor Smith?
Here.
Supervisor Colfax?
Here.
Supervisor Brown?
Here. I'd like to invite Ms. Diane Polly to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance, unified, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Polly. Now, we will go to public expression. This is a time for individuals to come and speak and to speak on items not on the agenda. And our first speaker, Mr. J.R. Rose, please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, staff. The bad penny showed up again, and here I am fighting for senior rights again. I want to know that the Ukiah City Council, in its wisdom, finally came on board, and they voted to make a rent stabilization for senior, for mobile home parks within the city limits from a four to five vote. Mr. Crane voting no on it. And I think it's, since the city has done it, and for, they said they were broke and they couldn't find the money, but they seem to found the money. If the thing is right, and it's right for the right cause, they should be done. I gave you, excuse me, I gave you the Rent Stabilization Act for Santa Rosa, and I hope you read it. Because in this ordinance, it's a win proposition, not only for the park, the people that live in the park, but also for the park owners, also for the people that have to administrate it. If you read it, it covers everything. And I would like to see this county board of supervisors come on board and help me, help the citizens out there that live in mobile home parks for a little protection, just like the city did. I'd like you, Madam Chair, to put this on the agenda so we can get it done. I think it's time. It's been a long time coming, and I would really appreciate it, and I know the people in the mobile home parks would appreciate it, if they get this on the agenda. So I'm asking you one more time, Madam Chair. Will you put this on the agenda, please?
Thank you, Mr. Rose, for your comment.
Okay.
Super, just one moment.
Well, I still got a minute and a half, so I got this, I still got a minute and thirteen seconds, so I will finish my little speech then. I hope that the voters and the city and the reporters make note of this, that the city of Ukiah came on board, but the county of Mendocino will not come on board, and I am real sorry that you won't. Because of the time, I still got fifty minutes here, Madam Chair. At the time of the situation, I had the same problem with a person, and thanks to Mr. John Pinches, we did get a resolution passed. Supposed to be for the help for the protection of seniors in mobile home parks. Fact is, I think everyone of you signed it. And yet, we can't seem to get this through. I had the same trouble with Michael Del Bar. I hope we don't have the same problem here, Madam Chair, because in two years, we'll be back to where we was when I was with Michael Del Bar. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
You, there is a question, Mr. Rose?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Smith.
Yes, Mr. Rose, you, you've brought forward to us the, the example of the city of Fort Bragg and, and, I'm sorry, the city of Ukiah and the example of Santa Rosa. Do you have any examples of any county policies?
The, uh-
Countywide.
Right here in this ordinance here, if you read it, Supervisor Smith, it shows how the city or the counties can adopt this ordinance. It's already written. All you have to do is change it from Santa Rosa to Mendocino, Ukiah, whatever.
But I just wondered if you had any examples of counties, not, not cities?
Pardon?
Because they're ve- they're very different in their structure and the applicability, so I just wondered if you had any examples of counties?
I have no, no examples of the counties that's done it, but there's, I understand there's quite a few, and with this ordinance here with Santa Rosa, they've, they've never been sued, they've never been taken to court over it, because they know it's a good ordinance. And like I said, it's a win-win proposition for, for everybody around. It's a stabilization for seniors, especially women who live in mobile home parks that own their own homes that are in this situation. I'm not in this situation.
Right.
I could pack up and leave tomorrow, and I'm not in this situation. But there's people out here that are in this situation.
So if you, and, if you do discover any county policies that, that are-
Well, I can, I can-
In place, would you deliver those to the clerk of the board so the board could read those? That would be, I'd appreciate that.
Well, ma'am, I'll tell you what, sitting right there, in your county council, she's already went through this a long time ago. She has all the information that you need. All you have to do is ask her, and she will give you what has to be done. She's a very smart lady. I would never put her job in jeopardy. I would never put anybody's job in jeopardy. But if you ask her, I think she'll give you the answers which you all need.
Well, I just was interested in your examples, so thank you.
Well, like I said, I, I don't know exactly how many counties. I do know that there's over a hundred cities in California that have it, but I'm not exactly certain on the counties. But this needs to be done. It really needs to be done.
Supervisor Pinches?
J.R., as you're well aware, this was referred to the committee about a little over, I think, three years ago, and it never progressed out of committee. One of the real issues, and I don't want to get into discussion of this, especially in the county, you know, we haven't built a mobile home park in, in Mendocino County, unincorporated area of Mendocino County, in thirty years, and rent control probably would take any incentive out of anybody by building a mobile home park.
I, I, I can't see that, sir, because what this does, and, and it did in Marin, it did it in Sonoma County, they've had it for years, and they've built mobile home parks in those counties and in those cities. And what it does is this, this ordinance like this one guarantees a park owner a return on their money. And I don't know any business that's guaranteed a return on their money like these people are. And it is, and it, it's also the mandate of affordable housing, which the counties, the state, the cities have set up, are supposed to be set up for the people. And I think if people, investors find out that, hey, I'm guaranteed a return on my money, they're not going to run away, they're going to jump on board. How would?
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Richard Johnson, please come forward, restate your name for the record.
Richard Johnson, publisher of the Mendocino Country Independent Newspaper. Last April, you held a meeting here with representatives of the U.S. Navy concerning the plan to expand the Northwest Training Range Complex, and there were a number of people here from the community who asked very intelligent questions of those representatives, and they were not well answered. And since then, the issue has sort of gone underwater like a torpedo. It's still coming towards us, and the Fort Bragg Advocate News carried a story in March saying that the Navy had abandoned the plan because of public concern over marine mammals. That story was absolutely false. You have on your agenda today acceptance of a press release or a letter from the Navy stating that the final environmental impact statement on this project has been filed, and that as of October 12th, the Secretary of the Navy will be in a position to approve the plan. This is a plan for beefed-up military training for the Northwest Pacific Fleet anchored in Puget Sound. The five-year war training plan extends offshore the entire coast of the states of Washington and Oregon and Northern California in a quadrangle extending 215 nautical miles off the sea. Most of Puget Sound and a series of special-use airspaces off the coast and overland near the U.S.-Canada boundary east of, to Ohio, Idaho. In the offshore area consisting of 122,440 square nautical miles from the Canadian border to the Humboldt-Mendocino Line, the Navy will be conducting live fire ship gunnery exercises, surface-to-air missile exercises, air-to-surface bombing exercises, sinking exercises, anti-submarine warfare tracking exercises, intelligence, surveillance, and reconnaissance, and unmanned aerial system research, development, test, and evaluation. There will also be expanded use of mid-range sonar known to harm marine mammals. The EIS, the final EIS, is no improvement over the draft EIS. It is virtually unchanged. The environmental planning process for the U.S. military is a mere paperwork exercise. This board asked Congressman Thompson to hold hearings. He did not. I'm going to ask you to, again, write a letter of concern, not to the Navy, they're not listening, but to Congressman Thompson, asking him to hold a hearing on this project, because unlike offshore oil, once this project starts, it can always be stopped, and, and the impacts will not be irrevocable. And finally, I want to say that this project to militarize the Northwest Coast, to dedicate this fragile ecosystem and economic development treasure to military purposes, is a fundamental commitment of these resources to America's unbridled global ambitions, that, that the fleet, which will be training in this area, is actively engaged in the wars in Afghanistan, Pakistan, and Iraq, because these aircraft carriers and strike groups are, are moving into the war theater in the Persian Gulf. So it's environmental, it's an environmental issue, it's an economic development issue-
Mr. Johnson.
And it is a peace issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Colfax?
Mr. Johnson, if you, if you will, please. We heard quite a bit of testimony when the, the Navy appeared here. Mr. Thompson, Congressman Thompson was not in, not present at the time. So what would you include in the document, not to go through it, but are you prepared at this time to present to this supervisor a letter that would succinctly and accurately express what you heard interpreted at that meeting, the major points, five points, six points, thirty-five points? Because it was a whole range of nuances and testimonial perspectives that were presented, and to send a letter to the congressman saying, we want you to hold hearings, I think something compelling. This board does not have the resources at the moment to devote to-
I'll do the research.
Resurrecting this.
I'll do the research.
If you could, if you could provide, at least this supervisor, I'm not asking you to submit it to this board necessarily as a whole, but I would like to see what you can present, and I would be happy to bring something forward, because I, I share your perspective to considerable extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Colfax. I will do that.
And Supervisor Colfax, there is a deadline of, for a final comment?
October 12th.
That is correct.
There's a deadline, but it's a meaningless deadline, because they're not going to pay attention to anything they get between now and then, and, and after that, they won't even record the comment. But it, there's no, there's, there's, the deadline is meaningless because what we're trying to do is reach the congressman, not the Navy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Smith?
Thank you. To that, to Mr. Johnson's comments, I believe that after we did hear from the Navy and from the public in a number of hours, I believe, of testimony here in these chambers, that we did follow up on that and took, took action, not just with Congressman Thompson, but with our two senators, Senators Boxer and Feinstein as well, asking them to, as our federal representatives, become knowledgeable, involved in this issue. And just to reiterate what the chair mentioned on page four of our published agenda today is a notation that Mr. Johnson is speaking about with regards to the Northwest Training Range Complex, the final environmental impact statement. The specifics are listed on the agenda, this is for the listening public, and that the comments need to be postmarked by October 12th, and that is part of our noticed agenda received by the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Supervisor. Next public comment, we have Cynthia Wallace. Please come forward, restate your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Wallace. I'm here on behalf of IHSS, and my son and daughter-in-law, and other people I know that are served through IHSS, and people that work for IHSS. Note, we did not start working for IHSS to become rich. To the Board of Supervisors, who do you serve? Who are the good Samaritans? Why did my son's hours get reduced from 140 to 70 hours? Oh, right, because he's the husband to his wife. She can toilet herself but cannot be left alone, as she has a brain injury. She could also hurt herself or walk out of the house, and God forbid, get hit by a car or get lost. But someone else, not a family member, a stranger, can get paid to take care of her the full 140 hours. Welfare says he makes too much money. Is less than $1,000 with a family of four too much? Someone suggested he get the children up for foster care. This is outrageous. Another county employee suggested he sent his wife out of state where she could live in an assisted living facility. Well, the county's doing their best to break up the family unit. Whom do you serve? Looks like your bottom line, not the people. In fact, you all need to remember the golden ruler, because at this point, none of you have even a quarter of inch compared to the caregivers. By the way, who will take care of you when you become disabled again? Do you serve? Who do you serve? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Christine Owen?
My name is Christine Owen. I also work for the SEIU Long-Term Care Workers. I take care of a severely handicapped young woman, and I'm talking changing diapers, hand-feeding her, having, giving her showers, and moving her around, and she's about the size as tall as me, but maybe not as heavy. I've also been qualified for twenty years to work with handicapped children, as I worked for the school district, and have just recently retired. This young woman's hours have been cut, and, you know, it's hard for the family, because they both, the parents both work. With the wages being cut, I just find it a lot of, it ju- just bothers me, because teenage girls can get $10 an hour to watch a grandchild of mine that's normal, and you're cutting my wages. It's already been cut before, hours have been cut. Me working with this child, who's, like I said, in her twenties now, gives the parents a lot of peace of mind, knowing they have a safe place to have their child go, and they also know that I'm qualified to take care of her. As she gets older, she gets more and more disabled, she has major seizures, and this is a big thing, and to not to want to pay me what I'm worth with no, the knowledge I have, and I also am a widow, so this makes a big difference in my budget, too, not getting to work with this person, as much as her parents need. And I'd like you to reconsider if, when you're cutting us, what other cuts could be made on maybe people in the higher government that get little quirks, and maybe they could get rid of some of their special luncheons and special deals, and use it for the people who really need it. Thank you.
Okay, we have, haven't any other speaker cards? Is there anyone?
Good morning. My name is Karen. Last name is Ann. I want to talk today about this article that was in the paper about grand jury reports, and, in general. I'm wondering, I did a lot of research on grand jury reports, because my life was so seriously affected in a negative way, in a very seriously devastating way, because when grand jury reports were submitted regarding Community Development Commission Housing Authority some years ago, they were filed without responses, and that is against the California state law. That's a penal code violation. And if those responses had actually been, if somebody had taken time to address those responses and handle the issues that were of concern to the grand jury, not just about a bunch of missing money, or misuse of a petty cash fund rotating at $25,000 a month, not just about how they make up their own rules, like if that had been handled, and that they play favorites. What I experienced when I was living at that senior center up in Willets and discovered, I was told by the resident manager, he had a big pot field growing in the back at the absentee landlord's field. That's why he couldn't make the ground safe or take care of anything, and him and his partners were selling out of the tie-dye shop in Willets. Like, I don't think any of that would have happened if those grand jury reports would have been addressed. And this article made it very clear in this editorial, that which I had been told by the Attorney General when I was attempting to deal with these issues, that the county council and the district attorney are two of the checkpoints that are supposed to make sure the grand jury process is functioning as required by law, not to cover up that something didn't get reported on and is still out there dangling and missing. And that's what happened in my situation. I believe that was done to avoid having to settle a lawsuit. As it's being suggested in this article, it's being done now, in the situation with Supervisor Smith, that I know very little about. I'm just very pleased that, however this situation happened, it led to this revelation where it's in print. Because I think that the grand jury needs to be respected. You look up the history of it, you see why it was formed. It isn't formed for special interest groups to stifle the process. It was formed to provide safety to the citizens, the taxpayers, and like, in my situation, all the residents at a living center. So I would really encourage you to please pick that piece up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ann.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Colfax?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. I don't have any comments, but I did appreciate your letter this week. I-
All right.
It's on the paper. Thank you. The, the idea that there's been, or the information that there's been some cut in hours with regard to home health care workers, I wonder if we could have Ms. Era or Ms. Cryer comment on this, or the nature of it. I, I don't know to which, to what extent this is something we need to be dealing with more immediately than we perhaps otherwise would.
Hi, my name is Susan Era. I'm the interim Assistant Director for the Health and Human Services Agency. Currently, we are in negotiations with SEIU, who is representing the in-home supportive services care providers, and we are discussing the wage rate as well as health benefits. And so I can't really comment on the process of that, except to let you know that we did meet just recently, in the last few weeks, and there's a new representative for SEIU, and we are waiting to hear from them at this point for our next meeting.
Okay, but the change in hours would not be a negotiated point. I don't want to get into negotiations.
Oh, I see, I see.
So if there's a change in work procedures and time and so forth, as far as I understand labor law, and I think I do know a little bit about it.
That would not be part of negotiations.
It would not be part of it. So I'm asking, what is in place right now? When somebody comes up and says, my hours have been cut, is, is that something that is part, or is that part of an adaptation to the shortfall of the county at this moment? I can see where negotiations might have something to do with this. But do you understand what the distinction I'm trying to make?
Yes. An, an individual IHSS client's hours are defined, who is eligible and for what number of hours are defined through the regulations, and it is an entitlement program. When a client is determined to be eligible, then we use the guidelines that are in the law and in our regulations to determine whether, you know, how many hours a particular individual is eligible for. If a client that we're serving feels that the hours they've received are, are not accurate, they have a legal process, that they have a right to follow through and appeal for a hearing, and that is a, a process that we have in place. And when they receive notice through the mail, exactly what steps to take to proceed with that process are identified for that client.
Okay, thank you, because I want to make it very clear that there's not been, nobody's going through the list saying, because of these cutbacks, nobody's going through the list saying, we have a new scheme in place, or we are now adapting to the situation at hand. So these procedures are the same ones that were in place a year ago, two years ago, three years ago.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's, I want to make that very clear to the public, because there are some of us that are very concerned about making sure this program is supported very vigorously by this Board of Supervisors.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there have been changes at the state level in terms of guidelines and eligibility criteria, which could certainly affect the hours that any individual person might have.
There are proposals that have been made, and then lawsuits filed to object for those. There's nothing, there've been no reductions in eligibility implemented at this point, but there have been proposal, proposals that have been presented for reducing the eligibility criteria as well, more, more so the eligibility criteria than the number of hours that a particular person would be eligible. But none of that has gone into effect yet because of legal actions that have been taken by advocates, so we're, we're waiting to see what happens at the state level.
Thank you.
At this point, the IHSS program has not had any direction from the state that we need to reduce hours in any, in a uniform manner. We're using the regulations as our guide as we have.
Thank you.
Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think that these are very important points to reiterate, because for the listening public, from the comments made, it sounds like the county is in the driver's seat with respect to signing on clients with those offering assistance, and we're using our own criteria. Are you saying that that's not the case? That it's set by the state?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I think that this is a very important point, because this Board, as Supervisor Colfax has said, has been a vigorous supporter of this program. As you know, we have instructed your department to send letters to the state, to the governor, to our elected officials protesting cuts in this very important, very important program for our citizens, of which thousands are affected in this county, and also objecting to any efforts by the governor or the legislature to caution those very important services to the county of Mendocino, which we are certainly not prepared to be able to provide. So I think it's important, if there are hours reductions or a diminishment of those with respect to eligibility, it is not coming from this Board of Supervisors. This is something that is, is being driven at the state level, and it's important that we remain vigilant, as I know you have in, in your position. But I think it's important that the public understands, we're not in the position of rolling back this program. That's not- That's not our intention, and we don't have that authority, and if that's happening, it's happening at the state level, and historically, we have been on the front lines pushing to have that not occur.
That is correct.
Okay.
We've appreciated the board's support in that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Era. Okay, seeing no further public expression, we're going to move on with the agenda, we're seriously behind. So the item that we have next, this board will be convening as the Redevelopment Agency, and we will be on Agenda Item Number 9, 1A. Mr. Dunne Cliff, do you want to take over from here?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a Phase 2 of an item that was brought to the board originally on August 17th, it was a work plan that was brought to the board. There was direction to staff to remove a particular, there was direction to staff to remove a particular item that's been accomplished. We've replaced it with a planning study to widen South State Street from approximately Oak Knoll Road down to Plant Road, and the cost of the work plan has increased. It's not anticipated that this will cause any problems, as this work plan is intended to be implemented beginning this fiscal year, with any necessary rollover going forward. And one other item of note that's changed from when this was originally brought to the board on August 17th, is in further working with the Department of Transportation, there's been some increases to a couple of the additional items to include for environmental work and preliminary right-of-way engineering. So this is not being brought back to you today with another full presentation. When this was discussed on August 17th, we had talked about bringing this back as a consent item, but we did want to agendize it and make sure there was an opportunity for any questions or concerns to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Dunne Cliff. Supervisors? Any comment? Supervisor McCowen, and then Supervisor Pinches. Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I believe staff has efficiently addressed the concerns that were brought up by the board previously when this item was before us, and it looks to me that they've followed through with revising the plan in line with the board comments.
I agree. Supervisor Pinches?
I'm trying to, I read this once in here, where it said someplace in there that there's currently no money available in the Safe Routes to School project, and the only way to fund this is through, I can't find that page, but I read it once here, for the RDA to fund it. And Howard, I'd like to get your comment on that. You have some projects, some Safe Routes to School projects that are applied for to the state for funding, and could you just talk specifically about where that Calpella walkway, the Safe Routes to School project in Calpella is in the process?
Sure, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm Howard DeShield, Director, County Transportation. We've applied through several cycles for several Safe Routes to School projects, as well as, you know, bicycle safety account projects, transportation enhancement projects. Calpella is one of the ones we continue to pursue. Often, if there's a design in place, or even a preliminary design, better environmental work done, there, money becomes available that people want to see utilized, and it actually, it makes it more shovel-ready, the old term. So when the RDA came to us and said, "Well, what could we do?" You know, our thought was, if we could begin that work in Calpella, even though we don't have the full grant for implementation, it could get us to a position where we'd be in a better position to, you know, get Safe Routes to School, T, bicycle money, any kind of money that came along. So that's what we're trying to do here, get that plan done, started.
I was just notified yesterday, Supervisor Colfax, for maybe your interest, that the Point Arena project is rated and rated the top project.
It's on Page 10, Supervisor Pinches. And I feel that a safe route to school especially is extremely critical in the Calpella area. I know that area well, and I always worry for pedestrians.
That happens to be where my grandchildren live, too.
Okay.
It's of interest to me.
Great, I've got support here. Okay, any other questions, supervisors? Or do we want to move on to a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Dunne Cliff, I'm going to ask for public comment on this. Anyone from the public that desires to speak on the work plan? Please come forward, seeing no one. Clerk, the recommended motion, I'd like it read into the record, please.
Motion by Director McCowen, seconded by Director Pinches, to adopt the resolution, rescinding Resolution 10-134 and BOS Agreement 10-137, and accepting and approving the work plan for the Redevelopment Agency, approving the amendment to the Cooperation and Repayment Agreement between the county and the Redevelopment Agency, and thereby accepting the short-term loan from the county in an amount not to exceed $662,000, adopting requisite findings required by California Community Redevelopment Law, Section 33445, further adopting known CEQA determinations, and directing the necessary additional CEQA analysis to be completed prior to the release of funds.
Thank you, Clerk. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none, unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Dunne Cliff, but we need to move on to the other item, and adjourn as the Redevelopment Agency. Oh, okay. All right. So we do have some other business, I am told by the clerk, so we do have a motion, so other business for the Redevelopment Agency, please go forward.
You know, it's actually my understanding that you will now be reconvening as the Board of Supervisors and addressing Item 5, do you have that, Clerk, 5C, I believe?
Okay, and before we adjourn, I have to ask for public expression for other business for the Redevelopment Agency. Does anyone have public expression? Seeing no one. Then we will adjourn as the Board of Directors for the Redevelopment Agency, and we will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and we will go to Item 5C. Okay, and these are the orders of the proceedings. Mr. Dunne Cliff, do you want to introduce the item?
With regard to this item, this is part and parcel with the resolution that was just adopted. This is, sitting as the board now, you will be actually accepting the work plan and the amendment to the Cooperation and Repayment Agreement that was just accepted by the Redevelopment Agency. And so staff recommends that because of the Redevelopment Agency's action, approving and accepting the paperwork, that you would then approve and accept this paperwork, sitting as the Board of Supervisors.
Supervisor Pinches?
Just a short question, Steve, is this all going to this borrowing and whatnot? Is that all going to be borrowed and paid back in this fiscal year?
It's our actual intention that there won't necessarily even be an additional line item created to fund this, we're going to attempt to fund this work plan based on the revenues that are received by the agency. So the short answer is, this work plan will begin in 10/11. We don't intend to have an outstanding loan balance through any portion of this, you know, moving forward, because the work plan won't necessarily be fully completed until 11/12.
So at the end of this fiscal year, it won't have any, at the end of the year, it won't have any financial implications?
Yes, that's correct.
Plus or minus? Thank you.
Supervisor McCowen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor McCowen, seconded by Supervisor Pinches, the recommended action. I will not have the clerk reread that, because it's very similar to the Redevelopment Agency, but I do need to ask for public comment. Would anyone from the public desire to speak? Please come forward, seeing no one. We'll bring it back to the board, we do have a motion. Supervisors, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none, unanimous vote. Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunne Cliff, and we are on to Agenda Item 5D. It's a timed item, 9:30 a.m., and we're hearing it at 9:45. That is the presentation of the 2009 Annual Report by the Community Development Commission of Mendocino County, CDC. CEO is the sponsor, but you're going to introduce the item, is that correct?
I believe so.
And have the PowerPoint. Okay.
Let me just start. Okay, Todd Crabtree, Executive Director, Community Development Commission of Mendocino County, also known as CDC. I thank the board for the invitation to come here and present our annual report. I will be brief, because as you noted, you are a little behind, so we'll try to be as brief as possible. CDC administers housing programs for the county of Mendocino, the primary programs we administer are Housing Choice Voucher Program, commonly known as Section 8, Shutter Plus Care Program, and Public Housing. We also contract with the county and cities to do community development work, and recently started also doing economic development work and energy efficiency work with a PG&E program. Major accomplishments have been, Public Housing was losing money for many years, we've just completed in the past year a transition of Public Housing to a voucher-based housing program to ensure affordability, while also now turning a department that was operating in the red into the black. Other major accomplishments are, Section 8 program was identified by HUD as a high performer for the past year, our agency was also identified by HUD as Small Housing Agency of the Year for Northern California, Nevada. Our Workers Comp Risk Attention Pool ordered us for going two years without any work-related injuries. We just started a new program for Veterans Assistance, so it's specifically a voucher rental assistance program specifically for veterans, and we're excited about that, we think that's a need in the community. Let's see, we have CDG programs and home programs that are offering, doing housing rehabilitation, down payment assistance, we're just starting a program to work with the UCA Community Center to fix up their roof, make it more energy efficient, and I think also put in a water retention system. And we were just starting a program with a project with the City of Fort Bragg, using stimulus funds to upgrade, do major rehab on three of our sites in the City of Fort Bragg. It's a very brief overview, but I'm trying to keep it brief for you, if you have any questions.
Supervisors, Supervisor Pinches?
You mentioned, Todd, that you are transforming from, to put the program in the black, it's been running in the red forever. Are you there yet?
Yeah, we're there. Basically, a brief reason, our programs are operating in the red for two reasons, our tenants pay a third of their rent, a third of their income for rent, so the difference is supposed to be made up by HUD, and during the past 10 years, HUD, there's a formula HUD says, do the math to show what you need to break even. And then they do, we do the math, and then they say, "That's great, but Congress is going to fund you at 80% of that." So you're already starting at a loss. And the other problem we've had is that all the cities have had significant utility rate hikes in the past few years, and our tenants can't absorb that, we absorb that. So combined, we're, our operating was, in the neighborhood, lost about $250,000 a year. With this transition, that apartment is now operating in the black.
So how did you get to the black, I mean?
Basically, what it is, is we switched-
Did the feds start funding you at a higher level at 80%, or what made you be able to get in the black?
Nope. What it did is, we just switched to a program that HUD is funding, is the short answer. We did tenant meetings, and one of the tenants said it better than I could ever say it, they said, "So you're just going from a program HUD isn't funding to one they are funding?" And I go, "Yeah, that's basically it. The Section 8 program HUD is funding." And that's vouchers. So what we did was, we made it voucher-based housing, and we have the vouchers tied to the units to maintain affordability. So the units remain affordable, but what it means is, we can charge fair market rents, which is what any Section 8 landlord would receive, and the Section 8 program makes up the difference. So the tenant isn't paying more, the program's paying more. So HUD's paying more, basically, so we're getting more of the tax dollars back.
So that balances your budget?
Yep. And I was just like, I would also like to just recognize, you know, the CDC was awarded Small Agency of the Year for Northern California, Nevada, beating up 40 other agencies, and we have some of our staff and commissioners here, and I think they've done a great job.
Would you like to introduce them, please?
Well, I don't want to stand up, anybody want to stand up?
Okay.
They worked hard on very difficult circumstances, and you know how hard it is right now to do government work, and we've been able to keep all our departments in the black, and keep everybody hired, without having to do any furloughs, and keep everything moving in a positive direction. So very proud of them.
You're to be congratulated-
Thank you very much.
-by this board. Thank you very much for being here. We will go to public comment, thank you, Todd. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Karen, my last name's Ann. Glad to meet the board, because I sent you-
Madam Chair, she is to address us, not the audience.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to acknowledge the Board of Commissioners, I've been in communication with them. That's an interesting report, and it all sounds very commendable. The thing to remember that's happening right now with Community Development Commission is that what happened to me has been identified by the State Department of Justice. It was a hate crime orchestrated by a woman who works for the Community Development Commission, Heather Blau, and it was to cover up all of the things that are on my blog site that I've referred you to, and that I've mentioned here quite a few times. Because the grand jury reports were never addressed, and at this point, according to my lawyers, that would mean they haven't been discovered yet, so they can still be discovered and in timeframe of a statute. And I am asked that the grand jury, asked the county council to open those reports up, and if this time she refuses again, then I'm going to go to the lawyer in San Francisco that works for the AG, and let her know that I'm also working with the State Department of Justice, getting the hate crime, the complaint handled with all the people's names on it, including Mr. Crabchat, and so on. And I think that I'm also, started the proceedings to make the report to the Office of Inspector General, that governs the HUD housing when there's been criminal activity and fraud and waste. Because whatever they're doing now, maybe it's better, but the point is, you can't just gloss over something where there's a whole bunch of missing tax dollars, and people, not just me, I stayed and made a stand because they wanted to run the only person of color out of that place, the little Filipino woman, Kimmy, four times. They used petitions, like a lynching party. They did it to a couple before that, they died of depression. I mean, what has gone on there needs to be rectified, and you have to make amends when that much hatred and violence has been perpetrated against individuals in a housing center, just because the bullies that run the place didn't like a couple of us, or they didn't like my African art, or my Native American this or that, they didn't like the Filipino woman. I mean, this is a disgraceful thing that happened there, and to just like have a report come in and everybody stand up, that's not, that's just like, no, this terrible hate crime happened, and you have to be held accountable. And I am going to continue to do everything I can in my power. If not get a lawsuit, it's going to press, go to a book, go to a movie. Hate crimes are intolerable in a community. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a recommended motion on Item 5D, Supervisor Pinches?
I'll make the motion, and just with a quick comment, I'm really proud of the Beckel Creek Village in Willets, it's a facility for 60 units, it's really, I'm really proud to have it in my district, and I really must commend the Board of Directors and everything for, you know, the maintenance of it is, it's always top-notch, I really appreciate that.
That's great. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Pinches, seconded by Supervisor McCowen, that the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors received the Community Development Commission of Mendocino Counties 2009 Annual Report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, hearing none. It is unanimous, and thank you very much for being here, very proud of your agency. Now we're going to move on to Item Number- Now, we're going to move on to Item Number 6A. It's a presentation by Health and Human Services Agency, Employment and Family Assistance Services. See for Yourself, online application for services. HHSA is the sponsor, and I will have them introduce it, and we have a great PowerPoint.
My name is Stacy Crier. I'm the Director for the Health and Human Services Agency for the county. Thank you for the opportunity to give you this presentation today. On April 1, 2010, Mendocino County became one of the 39 counties within the state of California who implemented a program called See for Yourself. See for Yourself is a web-based online application tool for clients to apply for benefits such as food stamps, Medi-Cal, and CMSP, and it allows the clients to access information about their benefits and helps them to manage those benefits. These programs, just as we discussed earlier this morning with, as, just as we discussed earlier this morning with IHSS, these programs are entitlement programs through the state of California. The eligibility criteria and the funds of this program come from the state, and the county administers these programs for the state. The program is designed to increase the customer service aspect of these services and still requires eligibility workers within the Social Services Division of the agency to interact with the client. It doesn't take away that interaction. It simply gives the clients more access for these services. You have in your packets today a copy of a PowerPoint presentation that we give to partners such as the Family Resource Centers, who may be in a position of assisting clients access these online services. We wanted to give you the entire presentation so you could see what the clients have access to and what they see when they access the program, but we're going to move through the presentation very quickly and try to help you catch up with your time here this morning. I want to introduce Marjorie Mullen and Katrina Taylor. They are both employed within the Employment Family Services Division within the agency, and they're going to go through this presentation for you. Thanks.
Thank you.
This is, this is an online application that was developed to enhance and help our customers within the county apply for benefits. I'm mainly focusing on food stamps. They can apply for cash aid and Medi-Cal and CMSP through this process as well. So, I just wanted to show you the presentation that we use to help train advocates and what our customers have to go through to get the benefits and stuff. It is a web-based portal. It's called, for them, it's called My See for Yourself. It does streamline the way the data is collected. Anyone can apply, and we encourage them to apply at home, senior centers, libraries, anywhere there's a computer. That's what they can apply for. They also, if they are an established case, they can access their benefits. It's updated daily. They can see what their benefits are. They can view forms. They can check messages from their workers. They can submit reports to us. This is the actual website called My See for Yourself. They can click on a link on the left-hand side. There it says See for Yourself, California Counties. If they're not familiar, if Mendocino County is a See for Yourself, they click on that. It takes them to this map, where they then click on Mendocino County, and then once they do that, it takes us to our county website, and they can click on the See for Yourself logo there, where they can apply for benefits, which then takes them back to the My See for Yourself web portal. They can log, they can register to get their own See for Themselves account, or they can log in if they're already established. So, the rest of this presentation just shows you what a See for Yourself account would look like for our customers. They can check their messages, the different tabs up on the front. There's messages in My Things to Do that would let them know they have an application to finish, maybe they have an income report to turn in. They can click on the My Benefits, and it would tell them what their monthly benefits are. There's forms. And then the very last one is an application, and I'm just going to click right through these. These just highlighted the different tabs that were available for them to check on their benefits and do things. This page right here is where they would start an application. They're walked through it very, it's very in-depth as far as giving them instructions. It's meant to be very user-friendly and interactive. They check here what, what programs they want. They go through, they're basically asked the same questions that they would be in a face-to-face interview, or if they filled out a paper application with us. And then at the very end here, it does ask them quite a few questions, but they're all yes or no questions. Has a little toolbar up at the top, which is kind of nice, tells them how far along they are in the application. They can review their application. They can apply for emergency food stamps as well, and then they have the choice of submitting their application to either their Fort Bragg office or the Ukiah office. And they do an e-signature. Their rights and responsibilities are given here, and they're done, and it's sent directly to our office, and we process it from there.
And there is, are there any questions? And I like to ask that of supervisors, and I'm not sure if you said, what do we do with clients that do not have a computer, access to a computer?
They can, they can access at any computer that has web-based activities, so they can go to the libraries, they can go to the senior centers. We are going to train the Family Resource Network staff to be able to assist. They have computers that are available. We're trying to, to make it easier for the clients to access the ability to get to this program, which is what, what it was designed for originally.
We're also developing a kiosk that's going to be in the lobby right at Social Services, and there's going to be an eligibility worker there to assist people that come in, they can apply.
Aren't literate and computer.
Right.
And they'll get help with their application, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yes. In my case, I have dial-up. And it is like, oh, my gosh. So, Clerk? Yes, we need to have the names reset.
I have it written down. I'll give it to you.
Okay.
I'll grab it.
Any other questions, Board? Now, we'll go to public comment. Anyone that would like to comment, please come forward. Seeing no one, we bring it back to the board. We do have a recommended motion to accept the presentation of the HHSA EFAS See for Yourself Online Application for Services. Moved by Supervisor Smith, seconded by Supervisor Pinches. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, hearing none. Thank you very much. Motion carried. Okay. Supervisors, I want to look and see where we're at for timed items. Okay. Now, we, we're going to fill in what we've already bypassed, and I think we're catching up with time. Agenda Item Number Three, Approval of the Minutes. I do want to point out to all that we did have a correction to the minutes of September 14th, and that was found on page 229. Are there any other corrections, additions, or amendments to the minutes? If not, let's move forward.
I move approval of the minutes. How's corrected?
Second.
It's been moved by Supervisor McCowen, seconded by Supervisor Pinches. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, hearing none. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Four, and that is our Consent Calendar. We have a regular, and then we have an air quality management district. Clerk, has proper notice been established?
Yes, it has.
Okay. Supervisors, are we pulling any items for separate consideration?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second, and then that includes the additional information on the air quality.
Okay. Public comment, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Scott Schneider from Visit Mendocino County. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for your continued support and service of the community and the county. Item Four on the consent calendar, just so you know, was the adoption of a resolution to install a gateway sign between Cloverdale and Hoplin, I think about a mile and a quarter into the county. This was one of the recommendations from our research about two years ago, and it's been quite a process, but working with Caltrans and also local community leaders, we've, I think, adopted a nice design, and we're very excited. Hopefully, it'll be installed now by the end, end of the year. Also, for those, those of you that go to Sacramento, the Capitol display, I know that you have seen it, is tired. We have been working on that for a long time, and we are looking to get the new display installed by the end of October. So, the next time you're there after the end of October, make sure to go and check it out. You've all received our annual report. This is our first-ever promotional annual report. We wanted to not have it be a 50-page document and at the same time, at the same time, not be a, you know, beautiful display. We didn't want to spend too much time and money on it, but we wanted to highlight some of the things that we've been able to accomplish in our first year, and there's been a lot. So, again, any questions or anything you ever want to know about what we're doing, we're always available. These are available for the public in the executive office. Two new things that we've recently published, working with the Arts Council, and you may know that we moved into the new Train Depot here in Ukiah. With the Arts Council, I highly recommend you stop by and check it out. We have a countywide arts brochure. I know the Lodging Association, when the bid started, and Visit Mendocino, since they started, has been trying to get something like this out for a long time. So, these are now out, and just trying to get visitors that are already here to stay longer, do more, and art obviously is a huge part of that. Also, business is not a huge part of our business, of our visitors, but it is a bit, a little bit, and we now finally have something to at least show them and hand them, or when they're interested in having meetings and events here. We're going to do a lot of research, outreach to the Sacramento and San Francisco Convention Centers and visitor bureaus, not to get their big conventions, obviously, but to get their executive retreats before and after, to get their family side trips before and after as well. So, again, I think that's about it. I just wanted to thank you again for your support, and we'll keep on trucking.
Scott, we, we do have some comment or questions. Isn't there a kiosk the Golden Gate Bridge District has down, close to the bridge and some of the walking areas?
I'm not familiar with that. There are, we work with the Convention and Visitors Bureau with their kiosks. They have one in Fisherman's Wharf, and then one on Market Street as well. And so, we do have our materials. We're members of that bureau, and we do have our materials down there.
Okay. And the second comment, I have plans for updating the Mendocino County window at the Capitol. I think I'm really pleased to hear that. Do you have a design already? Are you still working on it?
No. The, the design has been, has been finished for a long time. It's going to be etched, mostly etched glass with a digital photo frame, kind of displaying, obviously, the beautiful aspects and of the county. We can send that to you if you want. It's, it's been, it's being fabricated. It's been being built for months, but it has a list of some of the highlighted countywide events and festivals, some of the highlights of our wine waves and wilderness, and showing pictures at the same time. We think it's going to be one of the nicest ones, once it's put in, in the Capitol, so we're pretty excited about that.
Will it be in by October 30?
They, they're telling me the installation date is October 25.
Great. I have to be in Sacramento on the 30th. I may...
Yeah, please do, and if not, then we'll, we'll get on it. But it's been, it's a process. It's, yeah.
Supervisor Smith, and then Supervisor Pinches?
Well, I just wanted some highlights on the, on the exhibit in Sacramento, so I think you covered that.
Okay. And I'll send, I'll send a copy of it to Steve as well.
First thing, Scott, do you have your information there at the visitor center at the Golden Gate Bridge?
No, I don't believe we do.
If you don't, maybe you should talk to our rep, Jim Eddy, that's on Golden Gate Bridge District, and it'd be nice to get some of that.
Certainly do.
And, you know, I'm really excited about the, the gateway sign. Can you give me a little more exact location of where it's going to be?
It should be in the...
Is it south of Paiety Creek, north of Paiety Creek?
It's 1.19 mile. I think it's right near the 1.19 mile marker. So, as you're, it's, and it's up on a, there's a big hill.
So, it's north of Squaw Rock?
It, yeah.
It's south of Squaw Rock? Okay, probably on that big turn there. Yeah.
It was a, it was a result of a, of a couple of site visits with Caltrans and the county. And I wanted, you know, we realized people are going 60 miles an hour.
Yeah.
We have, you know, limitations as to size.
But there's a couple of good left-hand swoops in the freeway there where a sign up, a sign would really hit everybody right in the face. I can kind of visualize where it's probably going to be, but, yeah.
I think, I think it's going to provide quite a splash. Much, yeah. And the next one, hopefully in the next year, is on Highway One from the south.
My last question is, has it already been designed?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we get a picture of that sometime?
It's in, it's in there.
Oh, it is? Oh, I've never seen it. Okay. Good. Well, and my last question, Madam Chair, is there any plans to put one at the north end of the county coming south?
We are, and we actually, we're trying to work with the whole Confucian Hill project. And once we're, I know that's been put on hold for a while, but now it's getting back on track. So, we're involved with that process, and as soon as we know more, we're, that's, we're definitely going to put a sign up there as well.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Colfax?
Just to anticipate, first, thank you for the brochures. I think the, the, the job you've done on that is really useful to, it's going to be very, very valuable.
Thank you.
Couple of things. One, the sign is very much non-Mendocino. I think, no redwood, no rough bark, no authentic trees, pieces, and so forth. So, I would characterize it as hard-edged and minimalist. I hope that your artist, who in Mendocino County, who you've been very supportive of, had their input on this, because I know some people will not find it...
Okay.
...acceptable. I hope, I hope there's an outreach to make sure that the art community finds it, whatever that is.
They were, they were reached out to when we first went to design the sign. We worked with the Arts Council.
Okay. And the other thing is here is, I hope when you put wine waves and wilderness is a good order for the Ukiah Valley. I would like to see when you put one on Highway One at South End, that it goes waves...
Thank you.
...lines and wilderness, and Supervisor Pinches might have an appropriate ordering for the North County. But I think you're not allowed to add anything like...
Clear cuts.
Clear cuts.
All righty now.
No, I'm just quoting Johnny. Thank you. That's, I like that idea, moving them around.
Supervisor Colfax, because the Colfax Ranch has the best goats in the western United States, I would thought it'd be appropriate to put a goat on the sign.
Well, maybe, maybe cheese.
As I'm sure you know, the sign is a result of many, of a lot of input, a lot of committee meetings, and...
It gets boring up here, so.
And I'm, and I'm to keep them in order? We're moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I would like to announce before we vote on the motion to approve the consent calendar item, under air quality items, 4B1 and 4B2, they were not put up on the website. And for the public, the one item from the air quality district is to approve and adopt the management district's proposed purchasing, leasing, and contracting policy. And the second was approval of the district's request to work with county council to prepare district policies for purchasing, contracting, travel, and vehicles. Okay, so we all know what the motion is on the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, hearing none. We will move on. And thank you very much. On the agenda item, 6B, Department of Transportation Director's Report, I do not see Mr. DeShields. Does anybody have any comment on the Director's of Transportation report?
No.
I just wanted to note one portion of it, and that has to do with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, Phase Two, and five years later. I think it's important to note that the Board of Supervisors had to accept this project, and we had Phase One, Phase Two, we're falling behind on, but it was an unfunded mandate from the state of California in 2005. So, again, you know, here we are, dealing with unfunded mandates and trying to survive in today's world, and I was just taken back by that, and I think that we should have a report further on that, because I don't know what complications that puts us into when we fall behind. I certainly don't want to be fined or in trouble, and I hope at some future date, we can talk further about that.
The sheriff's holding a jail open for it, a cell open for us on that issue.
Okay. Alrighty, moving on to agenda item number 5A, our Chief Executive Officer's Report.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor McCullen?
And right in line with that, Director DeShille makes reference to the Mendocino County Water Agency's key coordination role for the National Pollution Discharge Program. So, that's one more of the pieces that we need to make sure gets picked up with the changes at the Water Agency, and maybe the CEO could respond to that issue as well.
Ms. Angelo?
Sure. Madam Chair, members of the board, the first item on my executive officer report today is about the Water Agency. I've been meeting with Mr. Sanford, and there are a few projects that actually have been identified that are, are not necessarily the core projects of the Water Agency, but are definitely important projects, and Mr. Sanford is making a list, and we'll be going over those. Additionally, he has been working with Mr. Gonzalez, and so, the transition timeframe will be sometime around mid-October, and all of those projects will be listed for this board, so you know what those projects are that are either underway or will be continued with the transition of Water Agency staff over to the Planning Department. So, that's the first item. I'd also like to remind this board and the public that tomorrow will be our Casper Joint Coordinating Council meeting at 2:00 at Fort Bragg in City Hall, and I will be attending that meeting along with our ad hoc supervisors and also Mr. DeShille. I'd like to report that yesterday, I went to Sacramento, myself and our Health and Human Services Agency Director, Ms. Cryer, and we had an appointment with the State Mental Health Services Director, Dr. Stephen Mayberg, and we all know that our status with our mental health services here in Mendocino County, and we thought that the place that we would start would be at the state, really looking at what our services are, and really seeking some advice, some guidance, some assistance from the state. And I have to say that the visit was, was surprisingly fruitful, much more so than I think we had anticipated. When you do state visits, you know, it's anybody's guess how it's really going to turn out, but we had a very successful visit with Dr. Mayberg and some of his staff, and some of the areas that we discussed, of course, were funding, that was number one. And they had done their, the state staff had actually done their review before we got there, and they were able to list out the outstanding receivables, basically what Mendocino County owes the state, and then also what the state owes us. And those numbers, they're still working on those numbers, but it appears that as far as the audit appeals that we've done, that Mendocino County may actually receive more money back from the state, or basically reduce the amount of that audit exception, more so than we had anticipated. Along with that, there is a payment that we'll be receiving, the outstanding claims are $2.7 million right now, and again, they had done their review, and the $2.7 million is, is firm as a claim, and we should be getting that money here within 30 to 60 days. So, it was really, as I said, surprising and quite fruitful. Some of the other areas that we talked about, of course, along with the funding for mental health, was around our MHSA plan, our Mental Health Services Act plan, and while that plan has already been established and adopted here, the state was very clear, Dr. Mayberg was very clear, that we could make modifications to the plan if needed, and based on our status here in Mendocino County right now, I think that the director and the staff in mental health are looking at that plan to determine if there are some modifications that we could make that would actually assist us with the overall mental health services, and the state is very receptive to us doing that. Also, the state will provide technical assistance as needed, and that's programmatic and funding. I'd mentioned to you the $2.7 million payment, and also, another suggestion from Dr. Mayberg is that we seriously look at some regional collaboration, and I think we've talked about that, we've talked about it more than once, but we haven't, we haven't fully acted on that, and so, I think that is an area that we'll be looking at as far as other counties and what they're doing, and if there is any type of economy of scale that we could achieve working with other counties. And I think ultimately, along with the funding and getting, getting some good information and news around the funding, was the confirmation that some of the plans that are currently being acted on and looked at right now by Ms. Cryer, Ms. Era, and the staff, really that the state confirmed that those, that that's really the direction we should be going in. And interestingly, in asking about the future of mental health, Dr. Mayberg, who of course is the Director of Mental Health at the state, does believe that we're, that overall, the state is making progress, and that if we could hold out for just two more years, that mental health should actually be stabilized within the state. And that, that was good news, hearing his opinion on that. So, it was really a very productive meeting, I felt like it was a really good use of our time, and I was pleasantly surprised on that. Okay, also, I'm, I'd like to let this board know that last week, the CEO's office met with our Public Safety Department heads, it was our first meeting, the goal is to really look at the public safety services across the Sheriff's Department, probation, the District Attorney, and the public defender, and as we've talked before, to really look at those areas that might administratively be areas that cross over, and that possibly we could reach some economies of scale within the public safety departments. It was our first meeting, and I'm hoping that we will continue to meet and determine if there are any areas to really look at. What did come up is about the courts, and the close working relationship, of course, with the courts, and how what happens in the courts affects us and vice versa. And as CEO, I have not had an official visit with the courts, and I will be doing that based on, on this meeting and some of the suggestions from our Public Safety Department heads. And lastly, I'd like to say that last week, I went on a forestry tour, Jackson Forest Demonstration Project with Chair Brown and with Mike Anderson, we went to his logging company, I have to say, it was another view of Mendocino County, of Mendocino County life and our economics here, and it was very interesting. So, that's my report for today, thank you.
And you did bring...
Piece of redwood.
A ring of tree, piece of redwood and redwood bark.
I wanted a whole tree, but I could only get a piece.
Which Ms. Angelo is going to display in her office.
That's right, thank you.
Okay, are there any questions, supervisors of our CEO? Ms. Angelo, do we have anything on our legislative platform?
Yes, Kyle Knopf, our legislative analyst and budget analyst, is here, and will be giving a very brief legislative report, thank you.
Chair Brown, members of the board, Kyle Knopf, analyst with the executive office. The state of California is now 83 days late in passing its budget, so that's 83.
You took my supervisor's report.
September 16th, 2008, was the former record holder for late budgets in the calendar year, and today is obviously September 21st, so it's safe to say that we are in new territory. As your board is aware, the budget discussions really didn't kick off until early August this year, when the Assembly Speaker and Senate President Pro Tem released their joint proposal called the Jobs Budget. So far, the only real action to have occurred was on August 31st, when votes were taken in the legislature on the governor's proposal, and separately on the legislature's proposal, and both failed. Since August 31st, there has been precious little progress on the budget. We've seen various hints that some things are on or off the table through the news media, but to date, the information has been scarce and at times unreliable. It is appearing more and more likely that we won't see progress on a budget until after the November elections, but as, but you never say never when it comes to the folks in Sacramento. A few factors that play into the late budget. State Controller John Chiang has now backed off his vague concern that the state would be issuing IOUs within days, and has now pushed the date back to the mid to late October. These changes in his stance occurred after the state finalized its August cash report that showed that the state collected $200 million above its projections. So, in a way, more money in the state coffers has taken the pressure off of the legislature and the governor, and this helps the budget become even later. Another factor that plays into the late budget is that there are two Senate Democrats who are having physical difficulties attending votes due to illness. This puts more pressure on the Senate Democrats to reach across the aisle and bring over Republican voters, or votes, which is something that has historically been very hard to achieve. So, you have an issue that compounds the two-thirds vote requirement for a budget, and two parties that are not really leaving their philosophical camps on the crisis. Another factor that is stretching our timeline is the governor's race is currently perceived to be pretty much a toss-up in the polling. Both sides are waiting to, waiting it out to see what happens. Finally, another factor contributing to the late budget is Proposition 25, which would change the vote requirement in the state legislature from a two-thirds requirement to pass a budget to a simple majority vote, and again, the polling is, is close. So, you have both sides really avoiding a confrontation at the moment, waiting to see where the political winds shift, and they will shift with the November election, which means a budget could be prepared sometime in December. The latest news from the last few days is after raising the option of borrowing close to $2 billion from Calpers, the governors dropped that idea, calling it a bad one. The Big Five meetings have continued to produce little, at least publicly, and yesterday's meeting was canceled due to the governor being sick. Overall, there are big changes coming to Mendocino County with the new governor on the way, and also a new state senator to work with. Legislation that hasn't gained traction over the last two years may now be more acceptable, as, as all the department heads contribute to our legislative platform for 2011. Again, I want to urge all the department heads and all elected officials here or listening in to make their contribution to the platform, it's very important. On another issue of importance to the county, the Williamson Act and AB 2530, which has been approved by the legislature and has been enrolled to the governor for his signature. This change to the Williamson Act would lower contracts from 10 to nine years, thus allowing counties to value these properties up to 10% higher. There are currently many technical issues being ironed out with this bill. CSAC, RCRC, the governor, and the author of the bill are aware of the issues that affect the counties, and there's likely to be a budget amendment language passed with the budget, whenever that is, or after the budget, to clean up the bill. There has been little news regarding subvention payments. However, staff is recommending to your board that this item be referred to the Lands Committee, who would return to your board in January with recommendations related to this important legislation. And with that recommendation, this concludes the legislative update.
Okay, I need to ask one question. There was a memo out, what is the deadline for submittal of an item to be considered by the General Government Standing Committee for state or federal legislation?
It is October 8th.
It's the 8th of October, okay.
If individuals contact me, I think we can work out if, if people need a little bit of extra time, so...
All right, and do you want guidance from this board on the Williamson Act?
Yes.
Legislation? Okay, we'll take that up in a moment, Supervisor Pinches?
Just a comment, everybody wants to focus on the $19 or $20 billion state budget deficit that the state has, but the state currently, right now, has a $26 billion deficit in their unemployment insurance fund.
Wow. And the reason why the state, I'm sorry, I don't know if you said this or not, but the reason why the state is able to continue business without issuing IOUs is because of the deferred payments to counties and to schools, so...
It looks to me like they're doing a, a union tactic, they're gonna have, they're having a sick-out over there with the senators and the governor.
Okay. Now, supervisors, the legislation on Williamson Act, I, I would recommend that it be referred to the Lands Committee? Is there any disagreement to that? Then so be it, direction of the chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Knopf.
Thank you.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Next item that we have, we're going to take up our 1030 item. And it is item number, let me find you, Sheriff, item 8A. It's nice to be able to celebrate and honor someone special, and we today have a presentation, an adoption of a proclamation honoring and commending Sheriff Tom Alman for his act of heroism, and the Board of Supervisors were the sponsors. Should the chair read the proclamation?
Yes, absolutely.
We have a proclamation of the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors, and I must say, would you like to come forward, Sheriff, that we've been editing in between business up here to get everything correct, so what we do have in our packets for the day has been changed somewhat. But the proclamation honoring and commending Sheriff Thomas Alman for his act of heroism. Whereas Thomas Alman has faithfully protected the citizens of Mendocino County throughout his long career as a public safety officer, a commitment spanning more than 25 years. And whereas Thomas, Thomas Alman's hard work, dedication, and devotion to preserving the well-being of a Mendocino County residence was recognized by local constituents when he was elected sheriff of Mendocino County in 2006, and re-elected without opposition in 2010. And whereas Thomas Alman, Mendocino County Sheriff, personifies the law enforcement code of ethics, both as a public safety officer and as a private citizen, which encompasses the fundamental duty to serve mankind, to safeguard lives and property, to protect the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression and/or intimidation, and the peaceful against violence or disorder, and to respect the constitutional rights of all persons to liberty, equity, and justice. And whereas Sheriff Alman's emergency responder training was called to the test on August 11th, 2009... eleventh, two thousand nine, when he acted without hesitation or regard for his personal safety upon encountering a fully engulfed vehicle near Highway one oh one north of Ukiah, pulling a citizen from her burning vehicle with help from another person, placing the life of another before his own. And whereas Sheriff Alman suffered second-degree burns to his hands and as a result of this heroic rescue undertaking, and downplayed his injuries in his typical style, stating, "I was only doing what I was trained to do." And whereas Sheriff, despite Sheriff Alman's tremendous courage and bravery, a constituent of Mendocino County, beloved wife, mother's sister, daughter, elementary school teacher and friend, and was lost to us. And whereas Mendocino County is proud to recognize Sheriff Alman as a recipient of Governor Schwarzenegger's Public Safety Medal of Valor for his selflessness, commitment to serve in the line of duty, risking his life every day to protect our citizens. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mendocino County Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize and thank Sheriff Alman for his heroic actions, and extend its deepest and sincere appreciation for his commitment to serve all the members of our community. Now therefore, be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors envisions that our sheriff will continue to exhibit strong and positive leadership within our community, our county, and our country for many years to come. This is dated September twenty-first, two thousand ten. Signed, Carrie Brown, Chair. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by all five.[762.79][762.79](Laughter). Shall we now vote on it? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sheriff?
Sit here.
I'm thrilled to get a five-oh vote.[808.01][808.01](Laughter).
I thought about voting no, Tom, just to know you're still in Mendocino County.
Okay, thanks. Thanks Johnny. You know, I appreciate this. Of course, I appreciate the board. I have, I think of this every day, and Dr. Blackwelder and Adam's wife who passed away, and the children's mother, and the community who lost a teacher is still very part of this. So thank you, board. Thank you to the men and women of my department who have honored me with their brave acts every day. I'm proud of them, and I appreciate what you did. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Tom, I want you to stay up. Yes, we should have clapped, but there's more. I'd like to call Heidi Dickerson, representing our Congressman Mike Thompson. Please come forward.
Don't forget to announce reception.
I will. Thank you. Keep happy. So through the chair, thank you for inviting us, and Congressman Thompson would like to convey his appreciation for everything that you do, Sheriff Alman. He especially wanted me to say how much he appreciates working with you to help bring services to Mendocino County, and congratulations on being honored for being a role model in our community. And with that, I would like to present the Certificate of Special Congressional Recognition to Sheriff Tom Alman in recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the community.[902.62][902.62](Applause).
Thank you, Heidi, and I would be remiss if I didn't thank the people who were there at the scene too, you know, the firemen and citizens and the BLM owners or BLM ranger who was there to help everybody pull in, and this stuff happens every day, and I'm just proud of what our county represents.
Exactly. Absolutely.[930.43][930.43](Applause). And why don't you stay up just for a few more minutes? I do want to announce that the two thousand nine Public Safety Officer Medal of Valor Award will be presented to you by the governor, and that is scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-eighth, at the state capitol in Sacramento. But Tom, I wanted you to stay here because we will go now to public comment, and I think it's proper for you to be up front as the public comes forth. I do have a speaker card for Jim Wattenberger.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Madam CEO and Madam Counsel. It's very enjoyable to be here before you on this side of the podium, and it's good to see your smiley faces. I wanted to tell you a little bit more, that resolution, the proclamation, was the very basics of what Tom is. He's a public servant at heart from the minute he wakes up, probably much like myself, way before he wakes up. We're thinking about things way in the morning hours. He's there to serve our public, our county, twenty-four seven, and he's done it many years, not just being the sheriff, but being a member of the public safety community. As a member of that public safety community, we're called upon many times to do some extraordinary things besides just receiving a paycheck, and as some say, receiving in the future an extreme amount of retirement funds. Those extreme things are called upon such as in law enforcement, you know, confronting armed suspects, fire department entering burning buildings. Hopefully you, as public servants, in swearing to that oath that we all took, will never come across situations that Tom came across that day on August eleventh. But that's when people stand out, when they do the things that Tom did, and that's what I want to tell you about. The call came in as a vehicle fire. To me, that's just a typical no, no big deal type of thing. Within minutes, I was responding. A second radio call came in and said there was a burn victim on the scene. So I stepped it up a little bit from North State Street, and I was probably doing well in excess of the speed limit, Tom, I'm sorry about that. But as I was approaching, there was a long straight stretch south of that location, about a half a mile long, and I could see this vehicle burning with flames at least twenty feet high coming out of that vehicle. As I got closer, the trees behind the vehicle caught fire, the center divider caught fire. This was a rapidly escalating situation. And as I got closer, which over the radio, I already knew Tom was there, but as I got closer, I noticed Tom start making some very erratic moves outside of the vehicle. And as I pulled up, I actually saw him dive into the vehicle up to his waist. Now remember, I just mentioned these flames were twenty feet tall at a minimum, and they billow out the side of the vehicle. So as Tom enters into this vehicle, he becomes invisible from the waist up because he is inside those flames. He did that with total disregard to his own safety because there was a person, a citizen, a human being in peril. He disregarded all of that. He disregarded his own safety, and as I was getting out of my vehicle, Tom was extricating this woman from her vehicle, and I then witnessed Tom putting out the fire on her with his bare hands. This was a very intense fire. And so the picture I'm trying to paint for you is, is the proclamation is formal, it's sterilized. This was a very deadly situation, not only for this poor woman who lost her life, but for our sheriff, Tom Alman, risking his life to do what he could to save that woman. And she did pass away, and I'm very sorry about that, but he extended her life, maybe several hours, to allow for her family to have those final minutes with her. Without our sheriff being there, that would not have been possible. So for that reason, I was very, very appreciative of Tom's actions, and I nominated him for the governor's medal. I will be there next Tuesday when the governor presents Tom that medal, because Tom acted with no regard to his own safety, and that's how heroes are created. And heroes need to be recognized and accepted in our community, and I thank my sheriff, Tom Alman.[1270.14][1270.14](Applause).
Further comment from the public? Please come forward. I think there is emotionally.
We're used to contentious conversations.
I am right now.
This is out of the norm. No, I'm very uncomfortable here.[1292.42][1292.42](Laughter).
Anyway, I'm very emotionally struck, and thank you, Mr. Wattenberger, for your comments. We will be having a reception. Excuse me, I am sorry, Supervisor McCowen. Please go forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to note that the board will be in session next Tuesday, so we won't be able to be in Sacramento, but certainly this award is entirely well-deserved, and I really want to acknowledge Jim Wattenberger for making the nomination for the award, and he's also someone who understands what heroism is about, since he's one of those firemen who did run into a burning building, putting the safety of others ahead of his own personal safety, just as you did last August. So we've got two heroes present here. So thank you both.
Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think Sheriff, it really is a testament to your character that you are uncomfortable because you seemed uncomfortable the majority of time you've been in the room today, which is highly unusual. You're not uncomfortable when you're talking to the board about the resources you need for your department. So I really do believe that it is a testament to your character that when the attention's on you, it's not something that you seek, or really, it doesn't sit well with you. So thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, Supervisor.
And we invite everyone to the reception in Conference Room A. Please join us, and we will follow by going into closed session, and we will be coming back out reconvening the meeting at one thirty. Sheriff, thank you for being who you are. We're very proud of you, and our thoughts will be with you next Tuesday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
So we're going to the reception right now.
closed session because we are going to go back. We just have a little bit of business to complete, and the first business will be Agenda Item Number Seven A, and that's Supervisors' Reports, Assigned Boards, Councils, Commissions, Other Meetings, Standing Committees, and Ad Hoc. Board members? Supervisor Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Revenue Sharing Tax Committee, the Ad Hoc Committee, met as a notice public meeting on Monday, yesterday, and continued to discuss the specifics of the contractual arrangements being proposed with the four cities in the county, and went over some of those details, and I believe that council has now forwarded to those cities, to their respective attorneys, that draft contract for review, seeing if it meets with their approval, the approval of each individual city, and then that will be coming back to the board at some point when we receive a response from the four cities. So that was just basically on some minor language changes, and we'll just await the individual city responses.
Thank you, Supervisor. Other Supervisors? Seeing none. Only have one item I wanted to bring up, and we clearly discussed this in January, the Policy Council on Children and Youth. I believe it was the direction of this board to take that off our list of assignments, and have, since it's made up mostly of staff, they do have.
If you can't hear you, turn your mic off.
I'm not going to start again. Thank you. They do have a certain code that states a member of their council is to be a supervisor. So I don't know if you want to go back and revisit that and assign someone to do so. Evidently, according to the staff person I talked with, it's usually the chair, so I'm going to leave it up to this board. Do you have any comment?
Leave it up to the chair.
Supervisor McCowen?
Well, there is potentially going to be another item dealing with the Policy Council on Children and Youth that's going to get referred to General Government. Maybe this issue can be referred there as well.
Okay.
So I think we're going to have an agenda item for next week. Is that the plan?
All righty, then, that sounds good to me. I think that's an excellent idea. We all agree?
Sounds fine.
All right, then it will be assigned to General Government to discuss. County Council, I'm sorry, do you have, I didn't mean to interrupt, but do you have any report?
No.
Okay. The next item is item, Agenda Item Number Ten, and that's Appointments to Boards and Commissions. Supervisor McCowen?
Supervisor Colfax.
Oh, your pen's up. I'm sorry. Supervisor Colfax?
Yes, thank you. We had a bit of a mix-up here, meeting or two back, with regard to appointments to the Ocala Municipal Advisory Council. So I would like to recommend Ms. Williams Denton as the newest member of the Municipal Advisory Council.
For the G Mac?
For the G Mac, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Colfax, a second by Supervisor McCowen. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Posed, hearing none. All right. Now we will go back into closed session to conclude our business, and we will be reporting out when we have concluded. Thank you, Supervisors. We didn't want.